It was a very emotional night tonight at the Village Board meeting with trustee James Roberts, trustee Rob Dauphine, and Mayor Frank Fleischer all saying their goodbyes as their final meeting tonight. So, a lot of great information. Mayor Fleischer was emotional and talking about stories. I thought it was interesting. You know, I was hearing about, you know, the people that have been involved in government and the stories they have and the memories they have. So, it was one of those nights you really got to hear, you know, the heart of people. It was a full house and a really good night. We learned tonight one fact that he was, he's the first mayor in Mokina's history to serve three terms as mayor. So, that's a first and that's another historical fact that we can remember and attribute to him. But trustee Dauphine really did a great job talking about the impact and the things he's been able to be involved in, in his four years on the board, as well as Mayor Fleischer and all that he had to share. Next week, we have the new board being sworn in with trustee George Matanius taking the seat as mayor Matanius. So, we'll be here for that as well.
Proclamation for trustee James R. Roberts or James D. Roberts, Clark Martini.
The Village of Mokina proclamation honoring the service of trustee James D. Roberts. Whereas Mr. James D. Roberts was appointed to serve as village trustee for the Village of Mokina on November 11th, 2024, demonstrating a volunteer spirit to fill in an unexpired term. Whereas trustee Roberts brought to the village board a strong sense of civic duty and dedication to public service grounded in his many years as a resident of Mokina since 1990, where he and his wife Peggy raised their three daughters and now the proud grandparents of nine grandchildren. And whereas trustee Roberts is a veteran of the United States Army, having honorably served his country and continued that commitment to service in civilian life through his professional career and community involvement. And whereas trustee Roberts has been a dedicated volunteer in service at the Veterans Garage, which was established in 1976 as a nonprofit organization dedicating to providing an international organization for military vehicle enthusiasts, historians, and collectors interested in the acquisition, restoration, and preservation, safe operation, and public education of historic military transport. And whereas trustee Roberts has participated in many civic events on behalf of the Veterans Garage, operating restored military equipment, which demonstrates patriotism and promotes the mission of the Veterans Garage. And whereas during his time as village trustee, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Roberts actively participated in the governance of the village, contributing to board discussions and decisions with thoughtful insight, humility, and respect for the residents he served. And whereas during trustee Roberts' term on the village board, his presence reflected a steady commitment to the values of transparency, service, and responsibility that define the Village of Mokina. Now, therefore, I, Frank A. Fleischer, mayor of the Village of Mokina, along with the village board of trustees, do hereby publicly recognize and commend trustee James D. Roberts for his honorable service as village trustee, and express our sincere appreciation for his contributions to the Mokina community, proclaimed this 21st day of April, 2025.
I said, Tony, take a couple of minutes. I've been on the board for about six months, and there's so many people to thank and be thankful for, starting with Frank to reach out to me and offer this position. You know, I just couldn't tell people how well the staff of this village is. So, they did a remarkable job in making me seem like I knew what I was doing, making sure that when I voted, I was informed to make the right decisions. And I just want to thank everybody for the support, and I really, really enjoyed the time I spent on the board. So, thank you all. Thank you all very much. Why are we doing this?
We're doing this live?
So, I promised that this will be the last one.
Okay, next slide, a proclamation for trustee Rob Dauphine.
Okay, Village of Mokina proclamation honoring the service of trustee Rob Dauphine. Whereas trustee Rob Dauphine has honorably and faithfully served the Village of Mokina in multiple public service roles, including the member of the Mokina Plan Commission from 2017 to 2021, as a member of the Site Plan and Architectural Review Committee meeting, I'm sorry, from 2019 to 2021, and as a member of the Mokina Village Board of Trustees from 2021 to 2025. And whereas during his tenure of the Plan Commission, trustee Dauphine consistently demonstrated a thoughtful and balanced approach to matters of zoning, planning, and land use, advocating for development that preserved the character of the community while supporting his long-term growth and vitality. And whereas, as a village trustee, trustee Dauphine brought a calm, pragmatic voice to the village board, applying sound judgment, fiscal responsibility, and an unwavering commitment to the best interests of the Mokina residents. And whereas, trustee Dauphine served as a strong advocate and guiding voice in the development of the village's ongoing comprehensive plan initiative, championing a vision of the Mokina's future, and actively contributing as a member of the Comprehensive Plan Committee to help shape the long-range goals and priorities of the community. And whereas, trustee Dauphine has been a tireless advocate for veterans and military families, playing an instrumental role in the creation of the Village of Mokina's Hometown Heroes Military Banner Program, which proudly honors local service members and veterans by displaying commemorative banners throughout the village. And whereas trustee Dauphine worked closely with fellow officials, community members, and our Fallen Hero Foundation to ensure the success of this meaningful initiative, helping to preserve and promote a culture of gratitude and remembrance within the community. And whereas, beyond his public service in village government, trustee Dauphine has generously volunteered his time and energy through years of service of St. Mary's Catholic Church in Mokina, embodying the values of faith, humility, and community stewardship. And whereas trustee Dauphine has earned the respect and admiration of his colleagues, village staff, and residents for his integrity, dependability, and lifelong dedication to public service. Now, therefore, I, Frank A. Fleischer, mayor of the Village of Mokina, Will County, Illinois, do hereby recognize and extend heartfelt appreciation to trustee Rob Dauphine for his years of exemplary service to the Village of Mokina, and wish him continued fulfillment and good health in all future endeavors, proclaimed this 21st day of April, 2025.
Really nice. I'm a catch-all. Which one are you doing? You're joking, joking. But, no, it's very, very nice. And got a few things to share, a few things to say. I won't take up too long. But I'd obviously like to start by thanking my family and my friends for their tremendous support for this. And, you know, starting with my wife Lisa, my boys Robbie and John, I thank you for supporting me and allowing me the time to serve in this role. I look forward to not missing any more games going forward. Careful what you wish for. To my in-laws, Mike and Karen, I appreciate you always lending an ear to listen and a helping hand. And to my parents for their love and support. And for dads, watching from above.
You told me don't hate you.
All right, we're back. As I reflect on this time, there's just two things that I really value and going to miss, much like what trustee Roberts said. It's the work itself, it's the decision-making, the problem-solving, and it's the relationships made here. I've always tried to build bridges throughout my life, and I'm very grateful for that relationships going forward. I'd like to thank my fellow residents for giving me this opportunity to serve as a trustee for our community. And it's been my great honor to serve in this chair alongside everyone up here. Reflecting on the past four years, I actually went back to the beginning, did a little research about what I actually said at the time as a candidate, and I'm happy to report back to the village from a patch article in 2021. I said, as a candidate, I think decades of responsible financial management has been a solid defense for our town and has us now positioned to go on offense with future development plans, guiding future infrastructure, safety decisions, and investments in a communication strategy with important policy goals going forward. And in that time, I'm proud of how our board has voted to modernize our facilities with the least heart treatment plan and the new safety facility, and today has a savings fund for a new village hall. Really grateful to be a part of this group, present and represented in the back there. As far as safety decisions, of course, the brand-new building on 191st is a proud accomplishment of this village, but I'm also proud of how our board has voted every year just to keep providing more and more resources to our police to help them serve and protect. Chief Penn, you are a homerun hitter, my friend, as far as stating the need and why it's needed for the police. It's been great working with you. And to that point, I was honored to be on the Lareway 911 Communication Center, serving with Chief Penn, following in trustee Budson's footsteps in the back there, and along with Fire Chief Sorelli. I've enjoyed having some insights into what your day-to-day is like. So, that was a real honor. And as far as communication strategy, nothing to do with me, but that was something we wanted to approve on when we first came in. And so, again, I'm looking to the police here in front of me. Guys, wonderful job communicating with the residents through social media. And John with the village staff, just growing the communication channels over the years to reach our residents. It's really been great to see and much appreciated. And as this board's staff know, and as mentioned in that proclamation, my one big thing has been the development of the comprehensive plan. I'll be too agnostic. I'm a bit tired of talking about it. But our current plan, being over 20 years old, at the time, as a candidate, I said, I believe the next step for us is the comprehensive plan. If done right and done in a collaborative manner, there are big opportunities ahead of us. And, you know, obviously excited that here we are today. Mr. Cannon's got a community input session on deck for tomorrow night at our brand-new safety facility. So, I say that just to illustrate the point that the work has been happening. Sometimes I had to share with residents, sometimes we move at the speed of a glacier. I get it. But the work is happening, and obviously the work continues. I'd like to mention with the hometown heroes, thank you to trustee Fedora for your partnership on that, bringing that to light with the mayor and board's approval. I'm proud that that's in our downtown area. As I've said before, I believe that our downtown is the heart of our village. It's the perfect place to show our love, admiration, and respect for those who serve. Further, I'm looking forward to one day adding a service plaque in appreciation to fallen Mokina deputy Walter Fisher in the downtown area. Ninety years in the making. Mr. Smith, grateful to work with you. And Mr. Gaelic, bringing that to the board. So, really proud of that. And I'm happy to help with those initiatives as the board sees fit in the future. And as I mentioned with the relationships, you know, mayor, fellow trustees, my colleagues on the Planning and Spark Committees, Doug, I see you here. I know Mr. Gardy's here somewhere, to the staff. And I'm going to add Mr. Schlegel, and Gene Bingo, and Tim and Brent. Been here for all these meetings. Yeah, appreciate you, and been proud to be your teammate. Specifically, a couple of quick shout-outs. You know, mayor, I want to thank you. Starts with you for giving me a chance to start, and I thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I have more to say about you. All right, and to our past trustees, Terry Smith, trustee Budson, law without enforcement is just purely advice. Did I get it right?
Close. The intent is the same.
Thanks, sir. All right. And trustee Richman, thank you for your time and fighting the good fight at the county level. Trustee Swinski, as we talked earlier, thank you for your friendship and mentorship. Trustee Hurstead, I don't believe she's here, but I'd like to thank her as well. It's been great to be partners with you throughout this journey. I'll go around the board quickly. Trustee Roberts, thank you again. Trustee Fedora, I think we've, dare I say, had fun working and bringing those projects to life.
Yes.
Trustee Matanius, thank you for your 20 years, and congratulations on taking the next step in your journey of public service. I know you're going to do great things for the village. Clark Martini, no comments tonight. And trustee Angler, I hope to have half as much energy as you in one day. And you do a ton for the village. And where do you begin, other than I look forward to helping you with the golf outing soon enough. Trustee Germany, I've enjoyed sitting next to you for the past two years and appreciate all that you do for our town and your passion for helping our community. And I really appreciate the perspective brought to all the numerous construction projects and so forth. So, much appreciated, and I thank you. To the staff, we have a great team of dedicated employees throughout. Can't thank everyone, but certainly like to thank again the chief and the officers, or deputy chief officers here tonight. Community Development Director Brett Kahn, Public Works Director Dan, where are you? You go back. And of course, Jim, when he was here. I see Kurt in the back. Thank you, sir. Katie, Chris, thank you. And village attorney Carl Buck, you are rock, my friend, and a beautiful writer. He did a nice job with these plaques. I asked Carl to sneak in, former Masters champion, to see if I had a second. And to our village administrator, Jonathan Masowski, I think I'll miss you most of all, scarecrow. It's not all a land of Oz, of course, and being a trustee and working on the village board has its share of challenging situations, difficult decisions to make, varying viewpoints here at the board and in the community, and of course, evolving state policies, evolving economics. And John, I just wanted to mention, you've been a steady hand for us, guiding the ship. And as long as you know that you are in your big-picture perspective on things, I very much appreciate it. In conclusion, yes, I'm nearly in. Is anyone I haven't thanked in the room tonight? But in professional golf, there's a term called inside the ropes. And inside the ropes refers to being granted that special access to be near the golfers and the caddies. Up-close, unique experience. And over the past eight years, I can look back and say that I have enjoyed being inside the ropes here with all of you, not just observing, but obviously contributing, learning, and developing, and understanding, and appreciation for our people and processes that make Mokina a great place to live. I know it to be true, it takes a village. All right, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Rob? It's a privilege to stand here before you tonight as we take a moment to recognize and express our thanks to someone who has made a meaningful impact on the Village of Mokina, trustee Rob Dauphine. Rob's journey of service to this community has been notable, beginning with his early contributions on the Plan Commission. Rob demonstrated a strong commitment to thoughtful, deliberate development of Mokina. His work there helped to ensure that projects met not the letter of our codes, but also the spirit of our village's vision for smart growth and a high quality of life. He played a key role in the careful review of zoning matters, land use issues, and subdivision developments, always approaching each decision with a firm grasp of both technical detail and broader community impact. Rob's leadership extended to the Site Plan and Architectural Review Committee, where he advocated for quality architecture and design that would stand the test of time and complement Mokina's character. His dedication continued during his tenure on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, helping to shape the long-term blueprint of our village's future. And most recently, during his term on the village board, Rob's steady hand and thoughtful insight has been instrumental as we navigated both opportunities and challenges. What always stood out about Rob is his calm, measured approach. Whether tackling complex zoning issues or shaping policies that affect our residents' daily lives, Rob has always taken a reasoned approach to his decisions, always guided by what's best for Mokina residents, both today and for generations to come. Trustee Dauphine, along with trustee Fedora, were instrumental in bringing to life the Hometown Heroes Banner Program, which is more than a collection of names and faces. It's a reflection of Rob's dedication to honoring sacrifice and building a culture of gratitude in our town. Rob has also served faithfully as Mokina's representative on the Lareway Communications Center Board, ensuring that our public safety dispatch services remain strong, reliable, and community-focused. And beyond the meetings and decisions, Rob is someone who always leads by example, quietly giving back through his volunteer work at St. Mary's, and always keeping the well-being of the community at the heart of everything he does. Of course, service like Rob's does not happen alone. Tonight, we also want to express our deepest thanks to his wife Lisa and his sons Robbie and John. Your support, patience, and encouragement have been a vital part of Rob's ability to serve the village with such dedication. Rob, on behalf of village staff, your colleagues, and the residents, you've served with such integrity. Thank you. We're grateful for your service, your leadership, and your heart for this community. We wish you continued success, health, and happiness in whatever comes next. Thank you.
Village of Mokina proclamation honoring the service of Mayor Frank A. Fleischer. Whereas Frank A. Fleischer has been a devoted resident of the Village of Mokina since 1977, and throughout nearly five decades, he has dedicated himself to the betterment of the community he proudly calls home. And whereas Mayor Fleischer, a veteran of the Illinois Air National Guard, having retired as a technical sergeant E6 after 10 years of service, has shared his life of service with his beloved wife Lori, and together they raised two children, Brett and Tricia, and now experience the joy of grandchildren, furthering the Fleischer family legacy in the heart of Mokina. And whereas Mayor Fleischer's long and distinguished career in public service began as a member of the Mokina's Planning and Zoning Commission from 1985 to 1987, followed by 16 years of service as a village trustee, 1987 to 2003, and culminated in 12 years as village president from 2013 to 2025, for a total of 30 years of appointed and elected service to the residents of the Village of Mokina. And whereas, in 2002, the village trustee Frank Fleischer completed the Leadership Enhancement and Development Course at the Academy of Municipal Excellence, provided for thorough partnership between the Illinois Municipal League and the Institute of Government Public Affairs of the University of Illinois. And whereas, over the course of his leadership, Mayor Fleischer guided the village through major initiatives and accomplishments that reflected his commitment to smart growth, fiscal discipline, and small-town values, including the launch of Mokina's next comprehensive plan to thoughtfully shape the village's long-term future. And whereas, Mayor Fleischer's tenure saw the negotiation and execution of boundary agreements with neighboring municipalities, including New Lennox, Orland Park, and Frankfurt, ensuring cooperative land use planning and long-term municipal stability. And whereas, under Mayor Fleischer's term, the village welcomed significant medical development, including new facilities by Silver Cross Hospital and Northwestern Medicine, increasing access to high-quality health care for Mokina residents. And whereas, Mayor Fleischer placed an emphasis on architectural quality and enhanced landscaping standards for new construction, reinforcing Mokina's aesthetic identity and long-term value. And whereas, his vision for a vibrant community was demonstrated in the completion of downtown streetscape enhancements, including the expansion of seasonal floral displays and other beautification efforts. And whereas, Mayor Fleischer was a proactive recruiter of business investments, helping bring major employers such as Altifor Peat and ABC Supply to Mokina, while retaining longstanding contributors to the local economy like Gordon Electric and Schilling Brothers Lumber. And whereas, Mayor Fleischer worked collaboratively with fellow Lincolnway area mayors on shared regional challenges and opportunities, and was instrumental in the implementation of the Flock camera security system to enhance public safety in Mokina and neighboring communities. And whereas, during his administration, the village saw the opening of the Clarendale Memory Care Facility, expanding quality senior housing and care options in Mokina. And whereas, Mayor Fleischer served with distinction on the Illinois Municipal League Transportation Committee and on the Will County Center for Economic Development I-80 Committee, advocating for improvements that would benefit Mokina and the broader region. And whereas, during Mayor Fleischer's term, critical infrastructure improvements, including multi-million-dollar investments in the village's wastewater treatment plant and regional water system, accomplished without increasing cost to the residents. And whereas, the village completed the construction of a new 35,000-square-foot Mokina Police Department facility in 2024, reinforcing the village's commitment to public safety, all accomplished without any increase in taxes. And whereas, through careful stewardship of taxpayer resources, Mayor Fleischer consistently delivered balanced budgets while ensuring Mokina maintained one of the lowest municipal property tax rates and a 7.5% combined sales tax rate, both of which are among the lowest in the region, thereby offering residents exceptional value for their tax dollars. And whereas, throughout his service, Mayor Fleischer remained committed to transparency, accountability, and community engagement, embodying the spirit of public service with integrity, thoughtfulness, and a deep love for Mokina and its residents. And now, therefore, on behalf of the village clerk, board of trustees, the staff, and the residents of the great Village of Mokina, we hereby extend our heartfelt thanks and deepest respect to Mayor Frank A. Fleischer with his exemplary leadership, distinguished service, and lasting contributions to the Village of Mokina, proclaimed this 21st day of April, 2025.
Where is it? But the reason I've been able, I was able to do what I did was because of boards and mayors before me. And people on our zone, you play the commission. We served at the same time with Rob Horace, Owen Price, Mark Shorley. And we did a lot of things that make Mokina what it is right now. One of them was getting rid of all of all their family in town. We got rid of that. We had plenty of that. And you pushed, you pushed like crazy for the last size. We all voted on that. You wanted 12,000, 12,500.
Bigger lots.
Bigger lots and bigger, bigger fundings.
We worked on the first comprehensive plan.
Yeah, yeah, we worked on that one. And we got a lot of stuff.
Obviously, they changed it. But it was a start.
It was a start. And thank you for all the work you've done.
Thank you. That's a three. Round the show.
I still remember that, the kids.
Yeah.
I'm a big Villery's.
Oh, yeah.
I'm a threat. But Mike, thank you. Thank you for appointing me to the zoning and planning commission years ago. And thank you for being the mayor you were. Okay? People don't know how much Mike did for this village. When he was mayor, the EPA could not allow us to build any more homes. We could not give out any more building permits because our treatment plan wasn't worth a crap, so to speak. Mike and our council, which was Congressman Singh, I served with, worked through Springfield, got us a good, a real good loan, you know, on a project, and built that sewer treatment facility, and then set it off. And the next big thing, and people don't know this, is I can't say don't remember. We just spent a lot of money to know. we just spent a little longer to know. But Mike was the mayor when they extended sewer and water down to 191st La Grange. That time was Bassin', Bassin' Watcher, Bassin' Watcher, Bass City. If he didn't do that, I'll tell you right now, Telly Park would be at 191st La Grange. So Mike, thank you very much for that. That's something I need to add. And Ron Gertowski. You know, years ago, one of the things I ran with Ron, and one of the things I ran was upset about was that we weren't handling new development well at all. In fact, we were scaring more people away than having them come into the village. So when Ron became mayor, we were trustees together, then Ron became mayor. And he pretty much was my mentor. And I remember when, and Phil, you remember this, when we met in your backyard with Mr. Dugan for Old Castle Woods. And you helped us out with that, get that settled out. And I want to thank you for that. But I went with Ron. I learned a lot with Ron. That was the thing that started Mokina's growth. Was getting Old Castle Woods in, and a little bit after that, we had a few. And then after Creek View, the thing that really changed the village was grassmills. That's where the village really picked up, really started going. Because when my wife and I moved out there, there was about, well, when I became on the zoning planning commission, there was about 5,000 people in town. In 2000, there was 15,000 people in town. That's a lot of development. And we made some mistakes along the way. But everything was coming in so fast, we didn't have time to change ordinances or do things. We were so busy bringing the developments in that we couldn't back off and do the other things that we needed to get done. But Ron, the thing I'll never forget about Ronnie, there was flooding. There was a real bad water problem in Brightway. And Ron would drive all around the town during the floods. And that's where I learned to drive all around the town from him. And he saw somebody flooded. Now, here's Ron, and everybody knew how we dressed. The guy's got about, back then, he had about $150 pair of shoes on. And he got out of the car, walked through a foot of water, went down to the guy's basement, looked at it. And if I'm not mistaken, I think he got the police department out, or the fire department out there to pump the water out of his basement. And that's what I remember about Ron. We'd be driving down the street, you'd see a box or a branch in the street, you'd pull over, pick it up, and throw it in the truck. So these, these are the people that I learned from. Bob Burke, and these are, these are the people that, and I would never change that. I'm who I am today because of them. I know the people that I'm on the board with now look at things a little different, but I learn differently. I run a board meeting differently. I look at things differently. And I guess maybe I scared some people. And I apologize for that if I did. But I only wanted to do one thing for this village. And that was to make it a better or professional village than it was when I moved here and became a trustee. And damn it, I think I did that. I worked hard at that. And nobody can ever take that away from me. Never. And John, thank you very, very much. The best move I made was to talk you into coming into Mokina, and I appreciate that that you did. I had to fight for it a little bit to get you here, but you are the difference. You've given me the staff that I have. And this is the best staff in Will County, there's no doubt. The whole staff makes me look good. One thing I remember a long time ago in this business, if you want to look good, get a good number one. That person will take good care of you. I also did that with the police department. We started out, we had to work at it for a while, and I thank, I thank Tim McCarthy for the work he did with us, and we finally corralled you two. But that was really our benefit. You really have been a good, you and you, you see, one thing, our police department, I don't know if you guys realize how much respect you have for the citizens of the village. When we had disagreements over the years, they took the side of you guys. They didn't take this outside. They really liked you guys. They really liked the respect. You know, they really liked you people. And the respect you showed them, that's why you got a gap. So I thank you. It's all for that. And I can sit up here, there's so many people, I notice people I forgot. Bill Hans, over the years, for God's sake. You know, we used to kidney all the time. And I still can't believe that he's still serving the fire department along with Joe Sorelli. And that's still the best fire department that we have. And I'll tell you, when we first moved out here, Bill, that was 48 years ago, we had a neighbor that told us how well that the, the medical, what do they call them, METs or? METs took care of them. So that's been going on for 48 years, as far as I'm concerned, probably longer than that. And thank both of you for the jobs that you do. But I look around and I look at people, like I said, Bill Webbers helped me over the years. I look at Gene, Gene Satter and Joe Slus with the Knights of Columbus, thank you for being out there. I picked up a ton over the years. I wish we got along and were trustees then. After we separated, I learned a lot from you.
We made peace.
But there's just so many people I can thank. I'm sorry if I missed somebody, but the people that really, my family really gave up a lot for me doing this for all these years. And I appreciate that very, very much. And my wife, people don't realize what Lori has done for this community. She got started in the community, you know, activities before I became trustee. She was working at the school. She helped out and is doing things there. She was involved in the place state, handling the funds for place state. I mean, she, she helped, she helped get, we were having problems over the years. My son Brett got sprayed when they were spraying 240 at the school. We didn't go sue anybody. Lori ran up on it, and darn it, she got pesticides out of our schools. Out of 159, and also, I met with Dr. Wiley, and he changed everything right away. And I'm going to step back for a minute after mentioning Dr. Wiley, because I was so upset because of what the people did to this man. My dealings with Dr. Wiley were with a very strong man that gave a damn about the kids in this village and his district. Everybody says, oh, look at how much money he's got. Well, he got the money because he didn't retire until he was 75 years old. And at the time, you were able to add into your pension. And to build those schools that he built, he made a deal with the residents. We're going to build schools, and if you want to use the facilities, sign up for it, and you can use the facilities. And then the poor man retires, and he gets criticized for everything he did. And it was the residents that wanted those schools built, along with the mayors. But it's so easy to pick one man and blame him for it. And I feel bad now because I never said this earlier. But that man, and you know Steve, he went through a lot of hell, and he didn't deserve it, and that was wrong. And Larry, I don't think you're listening, but I'm sorry for not saying something earlier about this. Now, let me get back to my family. Lori, thank you very much. You were always involved in everything. You always did so much for everybody. You cared for so many people. Even recently during COVID. I mean, she tried to get out there and help, help. Like the chamber, the chamber was having a tough time bringing funds in. So Lori talked to Melissa, and she ran the garden walks. She started the garden walks to bring money in to help the chamber out. And to this day, she still helps people that need help. And that's why I love you so much. And thank you for allowing me to do this. And I know Trish is watching. You too, Trish. And Brett, thank you very much. And you still remember that ballgame that, remember that ballgame? Did we win the championship?
Yeah.
Remembered everything.
Coach D, Ellen Williams.
That's right. We did, we did everything we could. But, and I guess that's all I have. I don't want to keep everybody. There are so many people I can thank, and I had a heck of a good time there. I had a heck of a good time doing this. As mayor, I enjoyed myself. There's a few more things I wanted to get done. But I had a heck of a good time doing this, and thank all of you for allowing me to do it. I appreciate that very much.
Mayor, say a few words. First mayor and board, ladies and gentlemen, would like to start with a few words here for my predecessor, Mr. John Downs. Dear Mayor Fletcher, tonight I am privileged to offer my thoughts and perspectives regarding your many years of dedicated service to the entire Mokina community. While I'm unable to personally attend tonight's meeting, I have requested my friend John Tomasowski to speak on my behalf. Having worked with you as both an elected trustee and village president, I was able to gain firsthand insight into your commitment, dedication, and passion for Mokina residents and businesses. I have also observed your accomplishments from a more casual perspective since I retired in 2015. While the times sure have changed since we first started working together in 1988, your community devotion and loyalty always remain resilient and steadfast. Mayor Fletcher, I firmly believe your heartfelt concern for the community has been the most lasting personal characteristic which guided you for 28 years as a Mokina elected official. During your early years as a trustee, you took the time to seek out and gather knowledge from more experienced elected officials such as Mike Everett, Ron Gertowski, Gary Chase, and others. While gaining experience, you also took the time and effort to learn about topics and issues impacting the community. This effort included seeking various opinions from residents and other interested parties. You never hesitated to engage with people, listen to their views, while maintaining an open mind. You regularly utilized a wide range of input while formulating your own thoughts and actions as an elected official. During your time as trustee, you worked collectively with other elected officials to implement many foundational strategies which may largely attack today. Your everlasting goal was to ensure that Mokina stayed affordable, safe, and livable while maintaining financial strength and stability throughout changing the unexpected economic conditions. Mokina residents elected you as their village president in 2013 and repeated their support in 2017 and 2021. To date, you are the only person to ever be entrusted by Mokina voters to serve three terms as village president. I know you were deeply honored and motivated by the trust residents placed in you. As village president, you worked with numerous elected officials and collectively led Mokina to continued prosperity. These combined efforts focused on distinct goals such as public safety, positive business development, infrastructure improvements, financial stability, and residential affordability. These goals were intended to provide Mokina residents and businesses the most livable community possible. Mayor Fletcher, while your accomplishments are numerous and well-documented, I always respected that you regularly acknowledged the many elected officials who have served with you over the years. You always stressed to me that the building blocks of a livable community require the hands and minds of many people working together. Being an elected official requires an enormous amount of time and sacrifice. No one could have committed the kind of time you spent without a loving and supportive family. On behalf of everyone, I'd like to thank your loving wife Lori, along with your children Brett and Tricia, for their years of support and family sacrifice while sharing you with the community. Frank, you have worked long and hard for the residents of Mokina. You gave the very best of yourself for almost three decades. The result of your heartfelt commitment will be everlasting and meaningful for all who call Mokina home. Congratulations for not only what has been, what have been part of accomplishing, but that you remain true to your heart throughout the entire journey. Sincerely, John Downs, retired Mokina village administrator. Do a little, little pocket here. We'll use some visuals while we do it.
This is handsome as I was 30 years ago.
Travel, you'll see that coming up. Mr. Downs pointed out your time here, so start to finish 30 years when you count your planning commission time here in 85 to 87. Your time as trustee, and then Lori kicked you back out of the house in 2013 to come back. Now, we're going to start a little bit, Mayor, we're going to go a little bit back. And as I think I recall, Mr. Jordan Starry and trustee Mazzarano, Mayor Gertowski, yourself, Mr. Downs, to name a few. I understood that as a blindfolded baseball game for charity back in the day.
John, can I interrupt you for one minute? Because I was remiss tonight on one person. And I wanted to say something about Joe Warner, and I didn't get to that part. I thought I'd be, I forgot. You know, Joe came out at a time when there was turmoil in the village. And there was a lot of baloney. Joe brought the people together to make it a better village. And one of the other things he did, he came up with an idea of wanting more than just property taxes from buildings out in our industrial parks. So he started to bring businesses that would generate sales tax. And he started bringing, the first one I think he brought in was a plumbing concern. And they bring in a lot of sales tax. And that, it turned out, what was that subdivision again up by, sorry?
Corporate corridors.
Corporate corridors. That's the, that corporate corridors that it stays, brings in the most sales tax out of any other location in Village Mokina. So Pat, if you're listening, I apologize for not bringing Joe up. But I learned from Joe also. I'm sorry, John, but I gotta bring that up.
Don't worry, don't worry. So obviously, Mayor, you highlighted that, and I'll kind of finish this one with the picture of you and retiring administrator Downs, and then the mayors who are here in person, that including former Mayor Warner, and I know Mayor Everett here with us this evening. Now, a couple of mayors, when we spoke and working with you here for nine-plus years, I'd like to hit on some, I think, key comments or key initiatives that we spoke about often, and I think that were very important to you. One of them is our youth, mentoring our youth for the various programs we have. Whether it's here on the, on the right was the Mayor for a Day program. Visit from the Girl Scouts, and we get the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, the Cub Scouts from time to time. And last, the last week, you had your last one, but the Student Government Day. Show some pictures from that. So working with our youth, talking with them, trying to explain what local government does from an understanding aspect, the importance aspect, maybe a future role as an elected official or village employee one day. But you spent a lot of time and effort, and I know you enjoyed that, and going back and forth and trying to explain some things and have some fun with our young, young folks in the community. I think a nice milestone that we had also, Mayor, during this time along the way was some recognition from the outside seeing Mokina's success. This particular one was Chicago Southland Convention and Visitors Barrow here, awarded the Village of Mokina as Municipal Leader of the Year. And a picture of yourself here with the award, and then the folks here, a couple friendly faces in the audience that were, that were there that day when you received the award here on behalf of the village. Giving back, you spoke about it here a little bit, Mayor, already. It was always important for you and your family, your wife Lori, to give back to the community. Did that many ways, shapes, and forms. One of them was carrying on the mayor's annual golf outing for charitable donations. Give very locally here, whether it be the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts. Bottom left corner, Mokina Miracles, does a lot of great work here in the community as well. Living Way Special Rec on the upper right, all just to name a few. But the goal was always to raise money here, bring it back every year into the community, keep helping our groups go forward in one way, shape, or form. Honoring our village. Honoring our village in many ways, shape, or forms, all the great work that people here do. Trustee Robert said it very early in the comments, and he's actually... Trustee Roberts said it very early in the comments, and he's actually correct. There's a lot of special, amazing people in our community, Mayor, and I know we talked about it. You enjoyed celebrating and talking about them here as they were, whether it be residents, groups such as the Chamber, former employees, a picture of Chief Radzuski there in the corner, a young lady here, a great baseball player. I know we had the young man here about a month ago who was a four-time state champion. So bringing these people forward, honoring the village, which is really our people. Here's a couple more photos, and how could it be, how could it be complete, Mayor, without a picture of you and Danny Potter up here? All great people, and this is only an example. There could be slides and slides of these sorts of things, but I know as we talked, Mayor, you took great pride in the people in the village, and just one of the ways that that always came out was appropriations. Partnerships, Mayor, and from our working together, and what you felt philosophically was partnerships were not only important very locally. You talked about some of your mentors and the board and working together, but also very big, you thought regionally planning was important. So whether that meant at state level, and we have some of our state folks on this picture as well, working with neighboring communities, whether it be Lincolnway, and I know former Mayor Holland there in the corner, but all the Lincolnway communities. Chamber up in the corner again, obviously, State Representative DeLuca, who I know you worked long and hard with and worked here on behalf of the village. So all the partnerships at all levels were important, and I know you maintain those relationships. And I always tried to figure out, have that relationship, have that friendship, and then figure out how it could benefit the village here as we forge those going forward. It's specifically for its own page, Mayor, is the partnership that you formed, and in this case with the Village of Orland Park, and then Mayor Pecow, Tenny's Park, and then Mayor Bettenhausen, but it carried on for I-80. Looking at it regionally, but then obviously looking at Mokina's behalf, forming the Chicago Southland Interstate Alliance, particularly with this group, but also I-80, knowing the significance of it regionally, trucks, what it's gonna mean to Mokina, serving on the committee through the Illinois Municipal League, IML, as well as the Will County CED group as well. Village events, all kinds of village events, as previously referenced, it is what makes Mokina special. It takes time and effort. So highlighting here a couple, and, Mayor, I think we caught you mid-hop here at the Fourth of July. There, and I think times were tough. I don't know if it was, were cut back, and you had to light the cannons back in the first couple of years. You got the job done.
I just show off that I can walk.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. But a few more, obviously, through the names and faces here, the Fourth of July parade being a big one. Caught you in action for Cleanup Day, Mayor. Former trustee Budson and former assistant village administrator Zoner, who are both here for Cleanup Day. All kinds of various, but all times, efforts, village events that all were intended to make the village better, celebrate us, celebrate our nation, all those kinds of things. And a few more, Christmas fest here as well. And certainly not last, but not least, some of our celebrations with the VFW, whether it be Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and then the bottom right, special celebration that we were able to have in honor of Charles Danny and his family at the cemetery here downtown. Now, beautification awards. So we're going back to 2016, Mayor, show a few pictures. One, to show a former clerk, Pat, here with you. But two, I illustrate a bigger point than just beautification awards, which was important and significant. But I think a driving force for your time, and you referenced it a little bit already, but as a mayor, I think one of them would have been aesthetics, how things look. In this case, beautification awards, working with our residents, trying to get the community looking good. That means residents taking additional time and effort. But certainly, that went above aesthetics for you than just residents. How development got built, very important how that got done. I know you and Lori were at times drive the community and report back some things that maybe weren't aesthetically pleasing. They wanted some follow-up and some cleanup. Aesthetics, how it looked, how it was gonna look short-term and long-term was, I think, one of the driving force that was significant. And as you can see, how the village overall looks today was very fruitful.
But don't forget, Debbie was pushing the beautification boards. I just have to walk the ride.
That's what every good mayor does, right? Puts right people in the right places. We're gonna shift here a little bit now, talk about development. Show some photos here at the beginning of any development, the proverbial shovel. So I know we got a couple here with Silver Cross, Clarendale Police Station, and we could once again show more and more pictures, pictures of development in its various forms, and we will. And so talking about that, we'll talk about some of the development. Everybody used a little different terms, but development is not just what you want, but the right kind of development. Long-term, that provides revenue here for the village, mostly in the form of sales tax, but it can be amusement tax and other things. So what the goal that is, bringing the revenue from other people, other places, businesses, try to keep that tax rate low for our residents and our businesses as we go forward. So just to name a few here in this time period that we highlighted, Altorfer Cap was a very big one that came from Allen Hurson. Had to work and try to get him here in Mokina, and they were looking at some other places as well. ABC Warehouse, got him across I-80, come over to Mokina. It's been very beneficial. And you talked about Corporate Corridors North. Slid in there a residential, and Mayor, I know you talk very fondly of Clarendale, as you should. Earling your term, a great place for our senior community to be, so they can stay right at home here potentially in Mokina. But aesthetically, also very pleasing in how that whole project turned out. Highlighted the top two with right on Route 30, long-term, long-term health care. Naturally, you do want the sales tax, you need it, but you also need quality of life. Part of that is gonna be health care, and certainly Northwest and Silver Cross provide that here for our local residents.
And you've looked at all those flags. That was a big deal for Trustee Plus and Trustee Richmond. And we had flags like that in front of a lot of our buildings, and they should get a mention for that.
No, absolutely. It was gonna get there, but thank you, Mayor. I thought this was gonna be a solo.
It hasn't been for 12 years.
I know, I know. I thought you let me do one. But I'll hit Gordon Electric, because I, not just development, but it was important not only to you, the board, and the community. And this is, I'll highlight one that's a big one, but we've done this more than once. Is keep businesses here, retain it when it wants to grow. So it was very nice to get Gordon Electric into Corporate Corridors North, where they grew there and created their headquarters. Hopefully, now as time goes out, build in additional sales tax with this agreement as well. So now, at the end of economic development, ribbon cuttings. And certainly, as trustee Fedor knows, I could show photos and photos and photos and photos and photos of ribbon cuttings. But a lot of development, Mayor, here for that 12 years you were here, so certainly wanna highlight some of them. Show a couple slides.
Go back just a second, John.
Sure.
I want people to understand, the lower right picture, I tried to tell Melissa that those scissors, I shot her. I don't know what she was trying to do with that picture.
The lower left picture, Mayor, I don't know that you liked that development that was coming out. Well, remain aimless. But obviously, a lot, a lot of great opportunities here. Work, obviously, with the Chamber. But development, businesses, friendships, relationships, partnerships, this is what makes it all go around. So very important, and good to see some of the faces here in these ribbon cuttings in the audience here with us in various shapes and forms as well. So with some of those pictures, and then bottom line, what does it come down to in numbers? And so, Mayor, we ran the time here from being mayor fiscal year 13 here up to fiscal year 25. Naturally, inflation and some things changed, fully understand that. But growth for a community, if you wanna keep the tax base low, needs to come from somewhere. In this case, and it's been a driving force of you, mayors before you, working with the boards, clearly through all this time, trying to do the right development that requires low village services, high village revenues where we can, and you certainly highlighted it, Mayor, with Mayor Warner, former Mayor Warner, and Corporate Corridors North. But during this time, with you and the board, there was significantly a lot of growth. Approximately 3.8 million here when you came in. A great period in 2015 to 2018 here, 44% growth. Here's our COVID time, nice jump here. Some of that is locally, some of that's the change in the law, where now online sales tax comes to that community, change in the state and federal laws. 12% up, 12% down, economy here driven, and 2% here in 2025. So a couple things about that. Now, that number started at approximately 3.8, well above 8 million here as we sit, and we're hoping to be about another 2%, 3% higher than that at the end of this fiscal year. So a lot of tremendous growth, and once again, keeps that, keeps that other taxes down, we can be growth here from sales tax. Now, we're gonna transition, Mayor. You talked about some of these folks, some of your mentors here in the beginning. Hard to believe that this is this room and what it looked like, but there it is in 1993. Some of those fine folks you spoke about, Mayor. The, I'm gonna call it the camera debacle here of 1998. Different time and place, we can't snap another one with your iPhone. And now, in 2001 here as we're transitioning, and you worked as a trustee, you worked with other colleagues, and then several other mayors here as well. Now, as we go forward, your time as mayor in 2013, starting up top. In 2015, as we transition, and now, I'll talk about this at this level, Mayor. You speak about it to me and others from time to time. One of the, one of your driving forces is coming back and spending some time with the village and wanting to be mayor is seeing the huge transition in all elected officials, village staff, that was gonna take place and how that was gonna work. And so now, you're gonna start seeing that more and more in these photos. 2017, and we show 2018, one-year difference for two reasons. Trustee Mazarana resigns here in 2017 with his house, and trustee Swinski gets a haircut here. He's not like holding this for us. I don't know if he's got one sick. Very important year for us. Now, going forward to 2021 and 2023, once again, a lot of names, a lot of faces. Couple things I'll highlight here, though, at this point. As former administrator Downs pointed out, clearly with all these photos, all these names, all these faces, that timeline, it does, it creates that 12 years in the first three-time mayor of Mokina. So congratulations for your longevity and your service, Mayor. Thank you for that. And number two, and we'll talk about what it produced, but a lot of working with different folks, different personalities, different viewpoints, different perspectives on how to get to an end goal. Everybody, I think, in their minds, were very strong in their hearts here for the village Mokina, but those different thought processes, different perspectives led for an ability here to work through common consensus, collaboration, cooperation, compromise, where it can happen, and naturally, at some point, after vote. So a lot of time and effort, and a lot of good group of folks to get this village there. And Mayor, you said it before, and you're absolutely right. Certainly, you're the mayor during this time, but worked with a lot of good group of folks here. A lot of them are in the, in the crowd here that previously served as well, so happy they're here. Because it did take a whole team to get this village to where it is today. You guys naturally inherited from the past, Mayor and boards, who have been very successful here in the past. And now, what does that mean? What are some of the real high-level things it means? And here's number one, net positive operating results from 2013 through 2025, over $35 million for a town of 20,000. What that means? Balanced budgets of $35 billion on top of it. So what that means is long-term sustainability, growth. Do not kick the can down the road, the complete opposite. Set the village up for future success. Have financial control and strength, so you can weather the downturns. So, Mayor, you and this group have done an excellent job here of financial growth, stability, and discipline through that time. And naturally, it accomplished a lot of things, but I'm gonna highlight the three it did. And at times, this isn't glorious, this is obviously not exciting. It's not always the biggest Christmas lights are on or the statues, but it's very good local government. Wastewater Treatment Plant, $11.2 million to substantially upgrade the four major components of it at that time. All paid in cash. Mokina Police Department, which has been open for just under a year now, hard to believe. Obviously, a photo of that wonderful day. Approximately $18.2 million start to finish. The all but a $4.75 was paid for in cash. Could have paid for it all in cash. We knew it was gonna be tight. We wanted to be conservative, so we took out that promissory note. And even though we could have paid it off now, we've obviously elected to keep it, only because we're getting more interest in the bank than we are paying for that promissory note. But a very long-term future capital here just paid for almost all in cash. And certainly, last but not least in that number three is Lake Michigan Water. The village has had it for a long time, absolutely. But now, as you see, we're a part of what's called the Regional Water System based with Oaklawn. All these communities are with us. Everybody has their percent they have to pay for for the upgrades, and these upgrades are for many, many years, except 50 to 60 years at the critical spots to complete, complete backup systems and duplicate systems in certain areas for a total of $315 million, which is a lot of money. Our share is just under $21.5 million. Now, with the financial planning we have forward, there is the plan here to pay for our share through that without putting any of that on the water. So no significant, yes, there's gonna be water and sewer increases because of Lake Michigan water and naturally to run things. But most communities, they're gonna take out 20-year loans, they're gonna pay this off over 20 years of water sewer. What are they gonna do? They're gonna add it to the water and sewer. And I know Mayor and board probably get tired of hearing this, but the next five, 10 years, you watch Joliet and that group, you see what these communities do, because most of them, talking to them, they're gonna put it on the rates. They're gonna put their share on the rates. Mokina's not doing that. So to have that police station, have the water sewer we are, is a great position to be. That puts this village in a very, very strong position. And with that being said, that part of it is just trying to keep the taxes down as low as we can during this time. Taking out of Mr. Pasbrigg's report here for the tax levy this past year, the 20, 24 communities in Will County, right at that low spot right there, 0.2182 for the villages' portion of municipal tax rate. Our overall financial outlook, the first sales tax, 7.5, as you can see in the neighboring communities where it sits. So shop local for all kinds of reasons. One of them is your own pocketbook. But once again, trying to keep it as low as we can. Mayor, this is normally the part you jump in, but no utility taxes, right? No electric, no natural gas, put on top of that. A little hidden, because it doesn't, it shows up on your comment in your NACOR bill, but we don't have it here. So it does help our residents, does help our businesses. And the last time we got raided in these two areas, still AA bond plus rating. Source, obviously, there from standards and bars, and police pension fund. Last we were, we were still in the top 15 at 82.47%. So not only are those items paid for water, sewer, police station, but this is what allows you to do. Is pay for what you should, pensions, infrastructure, those things forward. Try to keep the taxes as low as you can here on your residents and businesses moving forward. Mayor, you and this board have done an excellent job of that. And we talked about this, one of the reasons you wanted to come back, transitions at all levels, staff transition. So showing just a couple pictures highlighting timeframes and familiar faces, Mr. Zoner here, excuse me, with us this evening, with some old faces. Former administrator Downs, Mr. Zordon, Mrs. Dameron, Mr. Tebary, Mr. Vicaro, Mr. Detlock, just to name a few. And then there's obviously some other folks as well, but all kinds of staff transitions have been happening with retirements, people moving on, COVID, people wanting to move on, and what I call the new world of employment, some transitions here as well. So we've done an excellent job to try to transition from great staff from the past, to bridge that, to good, strong, efficient staff going forward. Keeping what is important here, the resident, the service to our residents, high. Good communication with our residents, trying to work with them here the best we can. So very proud of this group, the past group and the group we brought in. Change into the guard, so we'll kind of go by department here. Mr. Poloklin's highlighted. Mr. Smith is highlighted here as well for their promotions here that happened this past year. As we know, there's a lot more transitioning going on in that group here. A great, good, young group, energetic, so good group here. We're happy that we're forming and that new team's evolving here as we go. Police Department, Mayor, as you mentioned, Chief Benton coming in, his team is forming under, highlighting a few here. We have our two deputy chiefs with us this evening as well. Like the promotion recently of Sergeant Don, and promotion here of Deputy Chief Wilford to join Deputy Chief Stump as well. to join Deputy Chief Stump as well, so we have a very strong police department from the personnel, the capital to provide public safety, a great young group here as well for me. Now I'm gonna transition to one mayor, one that you didn't necessarily want, but you got, COVID nineteen, a challenging time for everybody for all kinds of reasons, local government was no different. How's it gonna work, where's the money gonna come from, where's the money not gonna come from? What can you do, what is the state trying to stop you from doing? How can you help a business? At times, maybe that was just part of being a counselor or a therapist, letting people vent through their frustrations, trying to work logic, and at times maybe state government didn't quite have it all the time for our businesses, trying to keep our residents safe along with our first responders and naturally the fire department's not ours, but we thank them for working very closely with our police department very effectively during this time, and the leadership of Mr. Haas and Mr. Sorelli, and then a former chief Stevens then during that time as well. Very difficult for everyone mayor, we're highlighting you with the mask, but we got through it, I know, long days, long times, Zoom calls, a lot of frustration at a lot of levels that we had to deal with that were coming down due to COVID nineteen and what was happening at the federal and state level we had no control over, but it was a challenge and ultimately the village came out very strong, became very prepared for it, it always helps when you're in a financially strong position, which the village was. Tried to make the best decisions we could like anybody else with the information we had at the time, and looking back at it, the village fared very well. Looking a little bit mayor, tying two of the, your thieves together here is downtown and aesthetics, the brick pavers here with the, the flowers around town have been very popular there as well, so two things that have helped as we talked, aesthetics important to all over town, whether it be the back of an industrial building in downtown Mokina Street, we'll highlight that here. And your planning side, I've always teased you, you always should have just stayed the chair of the planning commission with the way you thought about it, but you've given a lot of dedicated work to planning here to the village. In your earlier years, I know that was chairing, getting the boundary agreements done, chairing the second comp plan that the village did before you were mayor, understanding the importance of planning and, and wanting to get a village comp plan done and obviously one of the public, public sessions is tomorrow night for the, the new one that's being formed right now. And as was spoken mayor earlier by you and administrator Downs and his comments.
Well, he's a young guy in the right.
Yeah, I know.
With his beautiful, with his beautiful wife.
Yeah, what is that, two years ago? His family, and behind every man that spends that kind of time, effort and leadership in there, there is a very great, strong woman, sometimes pushing him forward when necessary. So thank you Laurie for all your time and dedication to the village in your role, number one, and two, Laurie, Brett, Trish, spouses, grandchildren, thank you for all the time you gave us with husband, father, dad, all the dedication it took, he was here sometimes that forced him to miss some very important things, so we do thank you for that.
No, I was here with Alan Zorden and I spent a lot of time growing as a trustee, and I thank him for that.
Yep, Alan and a lot of the good old staff in those days of growth and all that required a tremendous amount of time and attention mayor, as you somewhat referenced. A few more photos here over the time and obviously some of the celebrations of the family weddings here as well. So thank you family very much. And with that mayor, thank you very much for your time.
I just wanna thank everybody, it's been my pleasure, it's, it's been, it's been a hell of a ride, I mean I couldn't, all the people I've got to know over the years and what we accomplished during the village, I couldn't, I couldn't have done it without a lot of input from all the years and from people I haven't mentioned tonight, I just wanna thank everybody for allowing me to do this and thanks for helping out over here as always, thank you.